Good evening and welcome to the December 1st meeting of Troy City Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance and invocation by Mr. Bobby Phillips. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, please continue to wrap your arms around our world. We ask that you continue to heal the sick, give comfort to the infirm, and guide your followers to spread your word. We ask that you watch over all of the women and men who sacrifice their family, time, and lives in order to protect and serve in whatever capacity for the betterment of our society. We ask that those less fortunate find comfort and come to improve their situation in some manner through the generosity of others. Lay a calming hand over all the liberations in order for reason and common sense to prevail. We ask this things in your name. Amen.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Swayzer?
Here.
Mrs. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
All members are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read the summary of the minutes of the November 17th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, November 17, 2014, committee reports. The opening's committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing an agreement with the firm of MSA Architects to design the Oak Garden and a portion of Riverfront Development. Finance Committee reported regarding the recommendation of a loan from the Downtown Loan Committee, however, the applicant withdrew the application. Recreation and Parks Committee had a majority report recommending that legislation be prepared, authorizing bidding of the construction of Treasure Island Park at a cost not exceed $1,873 million. That was signed by Mr. Tremblay and Mr. Heath. A minority report was issued by Mrs. Oda, not supporting the bidding for this project. Streets and sidewalks committee, committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing agreement for the design of the Mukay Road Improvement Project Phase Two. Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing an agreement with a firm to design a new water tower. Resolution number R-52, 2014, agreement with LJB Incorporated for design of Mukay Road Improvement Phase Two was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution R-53, 2014, an agreement with the EM Agency of Columbus, Ohio, to design a new water tower, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-54, 2014, agreement with MSA Architects to design the Oak Garden and Expansion and Renovation Project was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-55, 2014, bidding for the Treasure Island Park Improvement was given first reading. There was a resolution approved in memorial to former Mayor Douglas A. Campbell, following various comments, Council adjourned 7:26 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Who will accept the minutes as read?
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We have just one committee report this evening from the Finance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 18th, Finance Committee and all other members of Council met for the review of the 2015 budget. This budget reflects the mayor's and council's number-one priority of economic development. We note that a budget must be a working document, and we anticipate some reappropriation during the year. The work and cooperation of the mayor, city administration, and department heads is appreciated in developing the budget document. It is a recommendation of this committee that the 2015 budget of the city of Troy be approved by the preparation and adoption of the appropriation ordinance. The appropriation includes continuing to fund the Troy Development Council in the amount of $125,000. We recommend that legislation be prepared, authorizing the funding to the Troy Development Council in the amount of $125,000. The appropriation includes funding for Troy Main Street Incorporated and Troy Recreation Association Incorporated. We recommend the legislation be prepared, authorizing the following for 2015. Troy Main Street Incorporated, $55,000. Troy Recreation Association Incorporated, $29,000. The appropriation includes funding for the Public Television Communication Center, also known as the PTCC, in the amount of $12,500 for the first quarter of 2015. We support the city purchasing equipment to record council and committee meetings and to provide access to viewing those meetings on the city's website. We recommend the legislation be prepared, funding PTCC in the amount of $12,500 for 2015. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swayzer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself, as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions or comments from Council on the report? Seeing none, we now open the meeting to comments from citizens. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Livingston is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before it goes in council.
My office is at 104 North Market Street, and I am here this evening on behalf of the Troy TV5 Public Television Communications Center Board of Trustees. I do thank the city of Troy and the council and staff for your generous support in the past. I would like to note a few things that we do beyond broadcast of the city council and committee meetings. Troy Strawberry Festival Parade, Fourth of July Parade, six weekly highlight programmings for the Chamber of Commerce, Troy Main Street, Parks Department, Lincoln Community Center, Mayor's Report, and others. Current event coverage, Taste of Troy, Bicentennial Parade, Hayner Day Celebration. We've got some fantastic footage of the illumination that we're in the process of editing right now. School sporting events, Troy Streets Alive, Troy Merchant Holiday Open House specials. And most recently, we are now live streaming. I could give you the website, which is rather lengthy, but if you just Google "TV5 Troy livestream," you'll see that. That means that even without access through Time Warner Cable, residents and transplanted residents that are, would not be able to receive the station anyway, can access that anywhere they have an Internet connection. We've made some fantastic strides over the past two years, and having our, portion of our budget that comes from the city, while we are thankful for that, in two years, we've been cut from $90,000 to $12,500. And that's very short timeframe in order to try to replacement funds for those dollars. It's not enough to continue to operate and do all the other things that we do besides the council meetings and the committee meetings. So we respectfully ask that city council look to the possibilities of the future and reconsider the 2015 budget appropriation for TV5 operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, then we'll continue with our resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R-55, 2014.
Resolution number R-55, 2014, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction of the Treasure Island Park portion of the Riverfront Development Project. This would be amount of $150,000, and this would be the second reading, I'm sorry, $150,000 grant of the parking lot, and the amount of the authorization is $1,873,000 for second reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Madam President.
Mr. Swayzer?
We'd like to move this to a third reading.
No objections. Okay, this will go to the third reading. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-56, 2014.
Resolution number R-56, 2014, resolution authorizing the Board of Recreation of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Troy Recreation Association, Inc., for recreation services. This would be funding of $29,000 for the Troy Rec for calendar year 2015, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this resolution?
Move for suspension.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swayzer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
I abstain because I serve on the board of directors of the Troy Rock, avoiding appearance due to privacy.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-57, 2014.
Resolution number R-57, 2014, resolution approving funding to Troy Main Street, Inc. This would be funding for calendar year 2015, amount of $55,000, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this resolution?
Move for suspension.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-58, 2014.
Resolution number R-58, 2014, resolution approving funding to the Troy Development Council for economic development for the city of Troy. This would be total funding for the year 2015, $125,000, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this resolution?
Madam President, I'd like to see this go to another reading. I'd like some more time to study on the Troy Development Council. No objections?
Move for suspension.
Is that possible, to do that on something that's going to be included also in the budget? Is that correct?
Well, it depends on whether or not it's done by the beginning of the year. I'm not sure if there's anything that we can answer for you tonight.
I have no specific questions. I just don't feel like that's a large number that I have never been able to study. I would have liked to have had the budget. The other things have not been in question at all. That one and the PTC are things that I'd like to look at.
I don't agree with our, move for suspension.
And I'll second your suspension.
Madam President?
Yes.
If she wants to have a, have it set over for another reading, you probably should go ahead and have a vote on that motion, and then if that fails, then have it moved to suspension. That's the way I would do it.
Okay, we have a second then to Robin's motion to go to another reading.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved by Robin Hurd and seconded by Mr. Phillips to go to a third rea-, or a second reading on Resolution R-58 on the funding for Troy Development Council. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
No. This is a motion.
Yes, the motion that you just made.
It's your motion.
So yes, I want it to go to another reading.
A yes vote is the vote, is to carry over the next.
Yes. Let's clarify that.
Mr. Clark?
Is that correct, Madam President?
Correct.
Yes.
No.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Swayzer?
No.
Move for suspension.
I'm sorry. Mr. Twist?
Don't be counting me out yet. It's easier than that.
I'll press.
Mr. Twist?
No.
The motion failed, so to put this over to a second reading.
Mr. Swayzer?
Madam President, move for suspension.
It's been moved by Mr. Swayzer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mrs. Snead?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-58, 2014.
Resolution number R-58, 2014, resolution approving funding to the Troy Development Council for economic development for the city of Troy. This would be total funding for the year 2015, $125,000, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this resolution?
Madam President, I'd like to see this go to another reading. I'd like some more time to study on the Troy Development Council.
No objections?
Move for suspension.
Is that possible, to do that on something that's going to be included also in the budget? Is that correct?
Well, it depends on whether or not it's done by the beginning of the year. I'm not sure if there's anything that we can answer for you tonight.
I have no specific questions. I just don't feel like that's a large number that I have never been able to study. I would have liked to have had the budget. The other things have not been in question at all. That one and the PTC are things that I'd like to look at.
I don't agree with our, move for suspension.
And I'll second your suspension.
Madam President?
Yes.
If she wants to have a, have it set over for another reading, you probably should go ahead and have a vote on that motion, and then if that fails, then have it moved to suspension. That's the way I would do it.
Okay, we have a second then to Robin's motion to go to another reading.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved by Robin Hurd and seconded by Mr. Phillips to go to a third rea-, or a second reading on Resolution R-58 on the funding for Troy Development Council. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
No. This is a motion.
Yes, the motion that you just made.
It's your motion.
So yes, I wanted to go to another reading.
A yes vote is the vote, is to carry over the next.
Yes. Let's clarify that.
Mr. Clark?
No. Is that correct, Madam President?
Correct.
Yes.
No.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mrs. Snead?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Swayzer?
No.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-59, 2014.
Resolution number R-59, 2014, resolution allocating funds for Public Television Communications Center for the year 2015. This would be the funding of $12,500 for calendar year 2015, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on the resolution?
Madam President.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I'm going to take the position on this, but I'd like this to go to another reading. I'd like to hear more about it to a committee, if that's appropriate.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
And we have a motion to go to a second reading on...
I think it was to refer to, back to a committee, too. Isn't that right, Mr. Phillips?
Well, it has to go to a second reading before it can send it back to committee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion to go to a second reading on the funding for Troy Public Access. Moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mrs. Burin. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Swayzer?
No.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
So the motion does carry.
Okay. This will go to another reading, and upon request, it will go to a committee for further Move on to ordinance then and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O-35, 2014.
Ordinance number O-35, 2014, ordinance amending ordinance number O-27, 2013 as amended by ordinance number O-7, 2014, and ordinance number O-24, 2014, appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio for the year 2014. This is the routine and no reappropriation of funds, first reading.
Are there any questions from council on this ordinance?
Move for suspension. That's it.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Clark to approve the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-36, 2014.
Ordinance number O-36, 2014, ordinance appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio for the year 2015. This is the appropriation ordinance for 2015 and the adoption of the budget, first reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Madam President.
Mr. Clark?
I'd like this to go to a second reading also.
No objections?
I'd like a roll call.
Okay. It does include that funding for public access. Okay. All right. It's been moved by Mr. Clark and seconded by Mr. Phillips to move this to a second reading. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Swayzer?
No.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
No.
And there are two failed suspensions, so it will go to a second reading.
The motion got what, the motion was to go to a second reading and it passed.
Okay, so it will go to a second reading?
Yes.
Okay. And that completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Madam Gini, do you have any comments this evening?
Well, first of all, I thank all the participating in Friday night's activity. It was a rather cold night, but certainly I do appreciate the support that was given for that event. Those that attended that Friday night activity, it was cold, but it was probably one of the best crowds we've ever had for illumination parade and tree lighting ceremony. Compliments to our emcee, Tom Kendall, for a wonderful job keeping it moving. Also, I gotta talk, you know, I had two of my three youngsters, youngsters, they're adults now, and their spouses, all Troy grads came back, were so impressed and so proud of what Troy offers. And they come from outside now, coming to visit, and when they say that, you know, they have a lot of pride in their heart about Troy, Ohio. If you had the opportunity to see the Pop Rocks, they did their opening on Saturday night at five o'clock, a band cleave, introduction of the team. It's a whole new routine. I would only tell you this. You thought last year was exciting. Wait till you see this year's group perform. night at five o'clock at Van Cleve, the introduction of the team. It's a whole new routine. I would only tell you this, you thought last year was exciting. Wait until you see this year's group perform. Whole new routine. If you get that opportunity, they're local third to eighth grade students and they are wonderful community ambassadors for our city. And it was a wonderful opportunity. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, and the mayor has a bike-friendly committee, I've mentioned many of them are very much aware of and participate with, we had our first inaugural pilgrim pedal. And there were some brave souls on, on Sunday, or, excuse me, Sunday morning. Yeah, Sunday morning. I got to give.
Thursday.
Thursday morning.
That's right.
I had my family, the whole, they just left. So, but anyway, I was there. I did make it there. And brave souls on a cold day, on their bicycles, dressed warmly and headed off for what could have been a forty mile ride. And I can only see that growing. It was really a popular event by the people who were there. They were excited about it. And so, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for in this community, a lot of activities for a lot of people at all ages in so many different variety of ways. And I think we should be proud of that. And I want to thank you for all that support, too. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several items. First of all, a reminder, the Dime Mill facility is closed now for the season. However, you can continue to buy the bags, the tea bags, and, and put those out. And we will continue to take those for the end of the season, cleanups that are, that are ongoing. We are still doing leaf pickup, so if you're putting piles of leaves out, we are in our third round. We are trying to keep ahead of not only the snow, but lately the bigger issue is gum in. And we are getting to that as, as quickly as we can, working five days a week doing that. Another reminder for your items of interest, we are closed on Christmas and the day after Christmas, that's Thursday and Friday, the 25th and 26th. We are delayed one day, Thursday, the 25th will be picked up on Friday, and then Fridays will be picked up on Saturday. There are, we are also closed on January 1st. That is the other day that we will be delayed one day to January 2nd. Final item is regarding several street, street projects that are ongoing and are soon to wrap up for the season. The North Market Street project will be, is on schedule. They hope to be done by the end of next week, weather permitting. It will be pouring asphalt yet this week, or more asphalt, I should say, yet this week. The same goes for the Barnhart, Frank Scott, and other streets that are part of the water improvements. Those will get, have a coat of asphalt put down yet this week. Now, in all of those cases, the final coat of asphalt will not go down until spring. And the reason is because of the weather. You don't like to put final coat of asphalt down until you know that the weather is warming for good. However, it will be perfectly drivable, everything will be fine. But again, that is all weather permitting. That's all I have.
Are we, is the fire department currently working out of the North Market Street?
Yes, they are.
Department?
Yes, they are.
That's all that, okay.
There were a couple of days when there weren't because they were doing some curb work and, you know, completely closed down the access. That was several weeks ago now.
Okay, okay. And so, North Market Street will be open then by the, probably by the end of next week, weather permitting?
I believe I heard you say probably.
I said probably, weather permitting.
Yes, ma'am. Weather permitting.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston, any comments this evening?
None this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Stickel, any comments this evening?
I have to call Ms. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone in council have any comments?
Madam President.
Mr. Phillips?
Follow up on yours. The Northern Market Street road work you were talking about, Mr. Titterington, is the Pickle Troy Ford or Banner Road intersection is at the moment. Start following that. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in council?
Madam President.
Mr. Clark?
First of all, I, I hope everyone had a safe and happy Thanksgiving and I look forward to the holiday season coming up. For Mr. Titterington, I, just to clarify, I see that the leaf pickups will end right around the middle of December, is that correct?
That's our plan.
So, we'll go till, weather permitting, of course. Good, good. And, and also, I just wanted to make public aware that the Silver Sticks Hockey Tournament is coming to Hobart Arena, and that brings in quite a bit of revenue to the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else in council? One other question, Mr. Titterington, that I've been asked this week. Is there any documentation on the Riverfront Development Project on the website that would, I guess, review or encapsulate the whole project?
Sure. I, I know we had some, we had documentation on there. I've asked for that to be made more prominent on the website, and so tomorrow we should have that.
All right, thank you. Any members of staff have any comments this evening? Does anyone in the audience have any comments?
Good evening. Marty Hobart, 101 Kings Chapel Drive in Troy. Here to speak regarding the preservation of the Loc 12 Miami Erie Canal stones that were beneath the Hobart Brothers' site. As head of the Troy History Alliance, I want to express my personal interest and also the interest of all of our alliance's members in helping to develop plans to preserve this important part of Troy's history. Members of the alliance include the Museum of Troy History, the Troy Historical Society, the Troy History Library, the Miami Valley Veterans Museum, Waco Air Museum, Hobart Welding, History Gallery, the Lincoln Community Center, Troy Heiner Cultural Center, and Overfield Tavern Museum. My understanding is that all the Loc 12 stones have tentatively been donated to the city of Troy by Illinois Tool Works. If the stones are formally given to the city by ITW on behalf of all the history organizations involved with the alliance, I would like to thank ITW for recognizing the history of the Miami Erie Canal, and that had on the city of Troy, and also for their efforts in going above and beyond the expectations to preserve this treasure. I understand the financial cost that ITW incurred to preserve the Canal Lock remnants was not a small sum by any stretch of the imagination. The originals, the, the individual stones are numerous, large and heavy, knowing that it will take time, effort, and money to incorporate them into an appropriate historic landmark or multiple landmarks. The Troy History Alliance and our member organizations are willing, and we look forward to offering suggestions, helping to develop plans, and being a partner with the city in preserving this part of Troy's past. I am also president of the Troy Recreation Board. I'd like to mention that Ken Siler and his staff just announced today that the Classic Rock Group 38 Special will be appearing at Hobart Arena Saturday, February 14th. And we have a lot of events coming up over the next three months, including the Hometown Holiday Concert, featured in the Dayton Philharmonic Orchestra, this coming Sunday. We have the Silver Sticks Hockey Tournament, and as mentioned by Mr. Clark, we have the Miami Valley Freeze High School Hockey Tournament. We have the Jordan Circus. We have the AAYA Cheerleading Competition, the Classic Rock Band Tesla, Beatlemania Magic, Mania, excuse me, Tribute to the Beatles. We have 38 Special in March. We also have the Southwest Ohio District Division III Wrestling Tournament. These teams and individuals come from Cincinnati all the way up to Toledo to compete for a berth to go to the state tournament, which is very prestigious. And we also have a Christian concert on March 10th coming up with Chris Tomlin. We also have nineteen public skating sessions in November alone, and many other events coming up with Hobart Arena. And sort of as a teaser, we have another announcement that will be coming out later this, the end of this week or early next week about another event for Hobart Arena. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart, and it sounds like a very busy schedule. I would also join you in requesting that the city staff spend some time talking with the, with Mr. Hobart and some of the other groups to hear some of their ideas about what can be done with those lock stones. Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Phillips?
Off of your comment, Mr. Titterington, in case, and I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, but in case anything that potentially could be constructed to use all the, or stones, and we don't use all of them, could they be sold as surplus to a museum or donated to a museum or, or some other thing so that they're all accounted for in case someone would want this?
We would have to look further into that. There are certain requirements that we have to follow when we dispose of property. I don't know that we would declare these as just surplus with no value, although putting some kind of monetary value might be difficult. We know it has some significant historical value. There are some provisions for preservation with historical museums where you don't have to go to auctions, you don't have to do those kind of things, and we will continue to be working with the groups. Mr. Hobart, I mentioned that we did meet probably on the coldest day of the year out of the site and, and looked those over and talked, talked a little bit, as briefly as we possibly could, about some ideas to use some of those. And a, a group of them are going to be putting together more detailed alternatives for us to look at as we go and market the site. Once it is completely cleared, we will be talking to potential developers about trying to incorporate some of the locks in with the redevelopment of the site, if it's cost-effective and feasible. But anything surplus, we'll, we'll have to evaluate the process we have to follow.
And are we looking at leaving them, storing them at their current site and not moving them anytime?
Not until we absolutely have to. And we are under no pressure by ITW to move them at this point. They said that there's no hurry.
Good, that's what I understood, so I was hoping that's, yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mrs. Oda? I have a question. There is some interest in people being able to access the ITW property when it's cleaned up. Will there be any time for people just to go walk around, just to take a look at the old lock site?
There won't be an old lock site there. It will be leveled, it will have seed and straw at some point, and it will be green space until it's, it's redeveloped.
What we close off?
It, I don't believe that it will be fenced off, however, it will continue to be private property.
Yes, just, just wondering. Have we received any updates from ITW as far as how long they anticipate it will take them to clear that site?
They continue to work diligently. We have not gotten a recent schedule, although in conversation, they are still looking at the end of December, early January, again, weather permitting. At this point, they are grinding the concrete.[1748.16]